Start please. The, thank you for being so patient, I think that was quite useful. We've got apologies from councillor Wynn, councillor Austin, councillor Knight, councillor...
You've got councillor, um, Peverington, sorry.
And councillor Head-Peverington.
Is she working?
Any declarations of interest from anybody about any of this planning? No, two people at least have got to leave at eight o'clock.
Yeah, apologies from councillor Stuart Piper.
Stuart Piper, oh sorry, yeah.
Yeah, I've got it.
Right, no declarations. The previous minutes, are they, anyone proposed that they are okay? Any... yeah, not more. And you're seconded by councillor Green, sorry, I must stop being...
I haven't got councillor Green attending that one.
I'll second that.
Yeah, you were there.
You were there. Oh, I was there.
And what about this presentation from Mr A Todd?
He has withdrawn.
Oh, he has withdrawn, oh yes. Right, Granville Theatre, didn't we have this last time?
Yeah.
The presentation.
The letter from them.
Oh, this is a letter from them, okay. For supporting principle, have we all got the letter, seen the letter?
Aline, have you got a copy?
Oh, she has.
You want me to tie, share it?
Presentation.
Yes.
Last time.
Thank you.
We now need to make a decision whether we support it or not.
Okay.
Do you want me to water it down?
Yeah, come on.
There's a letter.
So, we've emailed to the town clerk. This is a formal request following the presentation our representatives gave at the town council meeting this past Wednesday 6th October to officially approve full town council support of Kentfield Foundation's bid to acquire the old Granville Cinema through the initiative created by central government known as community asset transfer. We are aware that the building was approved as a building of community value in 2019 and as such, county district councils also agreed for it to be open to community organisations submitting applications during a three months window beginning September the 20th. As outlined in our business plan and our presentation on Wednesday, we bring with us a large number of other local arts-based charities in support of our acquisition, making a very attractive, much wider community proposition for the building. We hope this support request can be formally recognised through the upcoming town council meeting that discusses such matters requiring a decision. Just to remind councils, most of our current work is in youth engagement, but we are also an operator of arts facilitating artistic creation and cultural creation and have highly skilled members of our team in all of these areas, and that's from Jane.
Thank you. Steve, councillor Albon, sorry.
Thank you Chair. I can't support it, and the reason, let me give you the reason before... And the reason I can't support it Chair is because currently the consultation and TDC is out for other people as well to show whether they have an interest. And until that, until that issue is over,
We can't...
I can't, I can't say that I would support theirs because there may be another one that comes in which may be as good or as better. So until that time, I don't, I don't think it's right for Ramsgate Town Council to support one bid when there, when there may be others.
Okay, councillor.
That's my view, thank you.
That was going to be my first point. My second one is, I don't believe that we have the skills and understanding, or maybe I speak for myself, but I don't think all of us have the skills and understanding to be able to analyse their bid and fully understand whether or not their bid is viable from a financial point of view. And I'm not actually sure that within TDC's procedures there is actually the facility to, certainly as councillors, as the ward councillors, I don't think that there is the facility to actually have an official, we support this.
Okay.
Unfortunately, much as I actually love their bid,
Yeah.
I don't, I'm trying to move this on. Councillor Green.
Yeah, I mean, TDC councillors are in a different position. And I'll take the point about there may be other bids. But I don't think that stops the town council supporting the aims of this bid going forward. If there are other bids, if the bid, we could do the same with those two. So I would like to propose that this council supports the aims of this organisation's plans for the Granville Theatre.
I'd agree. And you seconded it, but can we put reviser in it?
Can I just say something?
Or be other, sorry.
I was wondering, if we are supporting, will we be supporting in any financial way?
No.
This is just a verbal, we support you.
Yeah.
Because I feel we've got nothing.
Councillor Nixey.
It is exactly that, we can support this bid knowing that we can also support others. It is in case if we support this bid and that's it, everyone else is out of the running. So councillor Albon saying, I hear you, that just means it's a case of like, yes, we like this bid and we like, you know, this would work. And actually, I mean, if anybody does though, the team behind it, and look what they've done before, they are really quite amazing, it's sort of the gift horse in the mouth here type of thing. But again, it's the council to decide. But, so we can support this, when other things come onto the table, we can also support that. To us, that's a win-win, isn't it? If we've got lots of different groups that are doing something, all of them over Ramsgate, that's not such a bad thing. So we're not limiting ourselves to one particular group.
Well, can we, can we, sorry councillor Piper.
Thank you. Other people who put in a bid, will they think that they've got to have our approval before? That's my concern about supporting this particular group, which is absolutely brilliant. Granville needs an awful lot of work doing, can we?
TDC are the decision makers.
Can we propose that we write to them saying we enjoyed their presentation and we think it's good, not that phrase, but there will be other, if there are other proposals, we will also consider.
I don't, you don't need to do that, you don't, you don't need to do...
We don't need to respond to this letter.
You don't need to respond?
Yes, that's what you're saying, yeah.
So we can, we can do the proposal that councillor Green and still, like I say, the next proposal, we can still, if we wanted to.
Yeah, yeah, but I was just wondering whether we ought to say that.
So...
Yeah, this is not the only, we, we might well listen to, we will listen to any other proposals as well.
Well, if you want some proposal amendment Chair.
Yeah, can I do that?
We have some questions please first Chair before we get that far, councillor Crittenden first.
Yeah, I wanted to say that if we are going to make a statement of supporting it, I would like it to include a caveat about the point that I made about subject to then meeting the necessary criteria from TDC.
Well, I don't think we're at that stage, are we? Because it's not us that are deciding.
No, no, it's, it's, we, we, if we are going to say we support this bid, it is subject to knowing whether, you know, we don't know whether or not they're able to meet their criteria.
No, it wasn't what I said Chair, that wasn't my proposal. My proposal was that we support the aims of this organisation in making a bid for...
Yeah, okay. Yeah, okay, yeah. I can go with that, perhaps.
Can we get any advice from town clerk?
Just, I just did, that's what I said.
Okay.
I know there's the issue town clerk with the fact that we're double haters as well. Can you give us some general advice?
I think the expression in the agenda to supporting principle
Yes.
is the appropriate expression, that it's the, as councillor Green said, it's the aims, but the principle of what they're doing, but we're not taking any responsibility for
The decision.
the specifics.
Thanks, I'll go with that.
Question Chair.
Sorry.
Can I, again, through the town clerk?
Yes.
Chair. This, this motion that appears will probably get approved, doesn't hold any weight, does it?
No.
There's no weight to it, there's no, there's nothing that we can do or whatever, it, it, it doesn't hold water, does it?
They might say when they come and do it, that Ramsgate Town Council supports them.
Yeah, they consulted us and we approved it, it's simple as that.
Yeah, but that, but that doesn't carry any weight in the process.
They're happy with their ideas, but we're not saying we...
And TDC has the decision maker.
Oh yeah, I know that.
Um, town clerk.
I confirm that we are not statuette on team for TDC when it comes to their decision making.
Okay.
Okay, so shall we go with David Sosol?
I think I know who it is, can you read it out again please?
Yeah, I've put the in principle, so RTC supports in principle the aims of the organisation in making its bid and its plan, you did actually say and its plans for the premises, so are you happy with that to stay?
No, no.
Have we got seconded?
I think, I seconded.
The seconded was councillor Nixey.
Oh councillor Nixey, is it all in favour? That's one, two, three, four, five, six, and against or abstaining?
Yes.
Abstaining? Three abstentions.
Three.
Councillor Liam.
Okay, it's carried on.
Okay. Can we move on to Ramsgate regeneration? This is the councillor's, councillor Green. It's on the agenda. It's the report from councillor Green regarding different regeneration.
At a previous, I think it was FGP meeting, I was designated to be the council's contact with TDC over the levelling up bid.
Yes.
And my report is just to say that TDC were interested in me being the council's representative
Surprisingly.
towards the levelling up bid and I had no, no contact with them whatsoever.
What, there is a report that I have read that talks about the Smart Boys Hostel becoming a boutique hotel, what report, what is that?
That's the levelling up.
That's the levelling up.
That's in the levelling up bid, that TDC got forward in their wisdom. So that's the way it sounds really, TDC did what they, what they wanted to do, which was a bid based on, half of it was on redevelopment support and the harbour.
Oh yeah.
And half of it was on further work in repurposing some of the buildings in the town.
But we have been told about that, because how did I know about it?
Well, it's been published.
Yeah, it's been published.
I, I put in a free information request asking for them to publish the details of their bid, which they at first refused, saying it was commercially confidential, but then when I appealed against that, they, they released it as a document.
Okay. So what do we need to do, just accept your report? What do we need to do?
You've got, as she says at the bottom of the report, councillors' views are required on how to take this forward, are you asking for?
Well, I think we have.
You have, yeah, well, we're noting your report, okay. And the draft neighbourhood plan listed on C consultation to consider Ramsgate Town Council's response to the consultation if this affects Ramsgate. I haven't actually read the report, I've seen this.
Sorry. Within the email that came out with your agenda documents, there was the link and we thought that councillors could have a look at it and see if there's anything within that plan that would affect Ramsgate's, in your opinion. So this is just a response to their requests to have a look, so...
I think the most significant difficult thing is not cut it down.
Yeah. Whether it's...
Yeah, they're on track with funding and everything, aren't they? So there's a move forward here.
Yeah. Okay, so... Are we going to just note that it's been done?
We could ask them as they did it.
Well, I know that answer's not done.
Chair, do we need to respond to their request?
They, they have asked for a response, so I think it would, it would be good to actually give them something back.
Yeah, I would propose that there are, there are no outstanding matters within their, within their consultation document that would radically affect Ramsgate.
Is it just the first few pages, that it?
Yeah.
Right, okay.
Very clear matter.
Yeah, that will do, anyone second that? Do we believe him? Yes, Rashan, ever councillor, Arwen.
And congratulate him, it's good.
And congratulate, oh, yes.
Yes, who did it?
Yeah, can we, can we...
Can we add them?
Their graphics are a bit over the top. All those in favour of signing up? Anybody against, no? Or nobody abstaining? Right, so the planning applications, can we get this finished by eight o'clock? Woo-hoo! So, we're over to Dean, ah, Sports Direct.
Okay, so the first one is Sports Direct, this is the one that you would have had presentation about and they've withdrawn from the presentation.
Was there a reason why? We didn't ask them to withdraw, did we?
No, we didn't ask them to withdraw, they, they chose to withdraw and they've actually sent in further information that I sent to you the other day.
I think their presentation was going to be about their future plans and they were concerned that it would be in a public meeting and broadcast to the world.
Oh, okay.
So they'd rather have a private meeting.
I, I actually walked round there today and I didn't realise there was a little, little road of sort of cottages, quite nice behind it. And if they do a four storey building, it's going to completely cut off the light to these places. It's aggressive enough already, does anyone else know?
I do.
Yeah. Yeah, it's aggressive enough already, this great brick Yeah. structure with no windows, a load of air conditioning units. And so I went into the sports shop and the sports shop does go back into it.
That's what we said last time, wasn't it Chair?
Yeah, yes.
Chair, I would propose that, that we go with the same objection that we had made previously.
Yeah, I don't know about the loss of ground floor commercial space, but they have changed the layout. Do you want to have a look at the actual plans?
Yes.
There is a lot, there is still a lot of ground floor commercial space.
There is, yeah.
But, but their argument is, is that they've split it up into marketable units.
Well, that's fair enough.
And that's why they say they're done it that way, which I think is reasonable.
Of course it is, yes, I agree with that. Yes, sorry councillor Liam.
I've looked at the plans for these apartments and I wonder, do we have any say at all on what sort of interior walls they'd be? Because I feel it would be the most difficult place to live in with the condensed number of people in there and the way these little flats all back onto each other.
It's just over. With very little outside.
It's just cramped, isn't it?
I think when we said overdevelopment, I think that's what, we can still do that.
Yeah, totally.
They are very cramped and they don't seem to have a lot of outside windows, some of them.
I'd happily second councillor Albon's proposal if we say the same thing before. We, I don't see anything that's changed enough.
Well, the shop thing, the commercial has changed.
Would you still go with it?
Oh, councillor Crittenden.
I just, my thoughts are, when I first saw the plans, were that to some extent this is a part of what we said earlier about the bringing in of the town centre. That's right at the edge and the very end of where the shopping part of Queen Street comes to an end and it turns residential.
No, it's not.
Way too short, way too small.
It just seemed, no, I didn't think there was that much, but it's, so in a sense, what we were talking about earlier though, about this becoming a more mixed environment, I'm not saying I approve it particularly, but the concept of having living accommodation in that area, I don't find a problem.
But that's, no, the amount though.
That's different matters.
The amount, yeah, the amount of people.
Yeah. I'm not saying it's the right layout inside, just the concept I find okay, but...
No, I don't, I don't think so that that, I think it's too cramped, isn't it? Um, not, yes, not hygienic.
Chair, I think we should welcome the redevelopment of what would be a problem building and then go on to repeating the concerns that we have.
I am much happier with breaking the shops up though.
Am I?
Because the big shops don't go anywhere these days, except Sports Direct, I suppose is quite big. So what are we saying? We're proposing the same, what did we say last time?
I'll make the amendment, do we, like welcoming the...
Welcoming.
The redevelopment of what could be a problem building.
Yeah.
Chair.
Yeah.
Sorry, I don't, I don't think you, I don't think that's appropriate.
Okay.
Just dealing with the, with the application, I understand what David, what councillor Green is saying, but you know, to, to welcome the development and then, and then, and then go against it, is not the right thing. I think with appropriate application, then you can welcome it, but that's, that's my opinion Chair.
But we think it's overdevelopment, yes.
I'll read it out for you. Ramsgate Town Council objects to the loss of ground floor commercial space and considers the application to be overdevelopment with this four storey extension considered as overbalking.
Well, could we take out the bit about commercial?
Surely if you added the word whilst for councillor Green's comment, it would be, whilst we welcome the redevelopment of the building, we oppose this, would that make it better? Because I understand where he's coming from, because basically we're saying, yes, we want something done with the building, but we don't want that, aren't we?
Uh, yeah, but you've got to deal with that application, you're not, you're not dealing, you know, that's, that's the whole point of a planning process, you deal with the application as it is. Not what you may think it may be at some time in the future. But I, I do take, I do take the chair's point in relation to the ground floor and maybe that week, I would be happy to amend my proposal and take the bit out about the ground floor.
Due to dangers, okay.
Do you want me to advise them of that? Members, in their further information, they have actually said the four storey extension to the rear of the site has now been omitted and the staircases to be constructed internally, does that show on the plans Dean? Can we see the new plans?
These parts here where you've got the stairwell, which is outside, and then they're constructing it inside.
Have we got some elevations of it?
Then that's lessening the internal space, the flat space.
I think it's too much.
But if I haven't, if I haven't...
Thirty-one flats.
Minimize the amount of flats, if that's the word.
How many people?
Is this Alcatraz or something?
Yeah.
It's horrible. Let's take one.
I'm happy to do it, just saying we don't know the truth.
Yeah, yeah, let's say we don't know.
Overdevelopment.
Yeah. Well, I, I would like to say that the ground floor space.
I just said that I would amend, I'm happy to amend my proposal Chair to take about the ground floor retail space out and just refer it to the, to the rest of the overdevelopment of the building.
Overdevelopment, good, right, so I think that's a proposal, I would second that. And would everybody be in favour? Oh, sorry, who's in favour?
I'm still making my amendment to the second Chair.
Right, where am I then?
I think you need to ask if there's a second for my amendment.
For your amendment.
Members, for councillor Albon's application, you have a second, councillor Nixey. Councillor Green has put in his amendment and that has not been seconded.
And that is to welcome it?
To welcome the...
No, that isn't what councillor Albon said.
I know, we're not talking about...
Maybe wants, councillor Green wants to make a further amendment.
Yeah. Come on, we've got six minutes.
To welcome the proposal to develop what could be a problem building.
Does anyone second that? No second for that, okay, so that falls then, okay. So stick with the original one. Oh, did we vote on that? Yeah, vote in favour, I lost chat there, come on. Okay, so that's carried.
Take it, that's fine, thank you.
With the commercial bit. Okay, this, do you want me to do this here? So the Lantern North of Fairlawn Road.
I'm just getting the plans up for you.
Yeah.
It's 12 three bed dwellings, 26 four bed dwellings, three one bed flats, three two bed flats, together with associated access parking and landscaping following demolition of existing structures. Called in by councillor Austin and councillor Makinson, big development needs looking at.
The, an awful lot of objections from people. One of the more relevant ones, I think, is the small access road to, is it North Down Road? That's very busy, is it North Down or North Wood?
Where these are.
North Wood.
North Wood Road, that is very busy and if that entrance got blocked, you know, no emergency vehicles could get in. A lot of people are complaining about, apparently there used to be an orchard there, which I don't think is relevant.
Absolutely not.
And their view will be spoiled.
You know, it's hard to view.
Let's hear some more opinions, yeah.
Thank you Chair. Is it right, it says 26 four bedroom dwellings on that site?
Yes.
Three, that's an awful lot of houses, I would say it's overdevelopment of that site. Far too many, 26 four bedroomed houses?
No, it's 12, no, 12 three bedroom dwellings, 26 four bedroom dwellings, three one bed flats.
Here's three, 26.
Two bed flats, it's like, whoa. Even if it was just the 26 four bed dwellings, it would be quite a lot with that.
I'm just wondering about parking.
I think it's overdevelopment of that site.
Yes, I would agree.
I would agree.
Getting in and out of there, is that access wide enough for emergency?
I would propose just overdevelopment.
Yes, so can we propose it's overdevelopment and the single access point is unacceptable? Insufficient?
Do we know how much?
It's a single, take care of that.
Do we know how much parking there is?
I imagine they've all got their own parking spaces.
It looks so tight.
Yeah. Although they'll have hard standing in front. I mean, the flood people have looked at it and the drainage people have looked at it, they've all given comments on the thing, apparently there's not a problem. But I, I do agree with the access to the main highway.
Dean, can you enlarge that?
You see, they, they have places in front to.
Room for one curb.
Yeah.
It says parking in the, in the application.
All right, now you can see parking down some of the sides, of the ones on the left. I'm assuming there's a park, there's a parking space there.
I, I mean, I, it doesn't even look like there are twenty six dwellings, never mind twenty six four. Um.
Oh, yeah, actually.
So.
With some of them flats, are, are, little blocks of flats as well, yeah.
There was only three one bed flats and three two bed flats, it's only six flats.
But are there twenty six, how, it's hard to say.
Yeah, what, what's the?
Twelve three bed dwellings and twenty six four bed dwellings.
Well, I can't see that there are even twenty six dwellings.
They're semi detached though, aren't they? If you look, they're semi detached, obviously, so they've got to be really little tiny bedrooms.
I have got a post on the table.
Yes, can we, can we, oh, oh, seconded, uh, did you have, take my amendment about? Overdevelopment plus access.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, it's, I will second that, can we have a vote on it?
You read the proposal out, please, Chair.
Um, object to the application, considering it to be overdevelopment and that the single access point is insufficient.
Yeah, I'll go along with that. Um, I'll second that, and can we have a vote on it? In favour, everybody's saying, no, against, no abstentions, okay. It's, these Delrenzio people have got. Making it all fuzzy, isn't it? Sorry, Chair, but I've got to go. Right.
Number three, Miss Cracker.
Number, number three, St Milders Avenue, there's, um, a little house in the back garden because they're on a corner. Um. They, um, to be honest, I think it's all right, a lot of people don't like it because it's covered in tin.
Covered in?
Corrugated thing, probably. And it's got that funny roof.
We're not, oh, yes, sorry.
Okay, so it's eight St Milders Avenue, erection of detached part, single story. Um. Erection of detached part, single story, part two story, two bed dwelling to rear garden. Replacement of boundary one. One point nine metre high fence with two point four metre high timber fencing and formation of drop curve onto St Milders Avenue. Councillors Austin and Makinson call this in, reason for calling was overdevelopment.
Yes.
Chair, I, uh, I. Uh, object to this in, in relation to the design of the building. Um, and its impact upon the, uh, adjacent neighbourhood and in relation to the. Uh, the, the fencing as well, Chair.
Okay. Any other comments before we vote on this? Uh, one of the objections was saying. That it wasn't specified what it was, it could be a office or something. But in fact, it calls it a granny, and it doesn't mean to say they've got the granny to put in it, but, um. And it may be just a way to get.
It's a dwelling, Chair, that's what it says.
Well.
I might look at it then.
Yeah, so, um, any, um. Is that the seconders for councillor Orban?
We're starting proposals, councillor.
I will.
Can you repeat it for me?
Uh, no, um, yes, uh. So I would say that, uh, R T C objects on the grounds of, uh. The effects of the design, uh, and impact on the local amenity of the area. And the, and the, which includes the boundary fencing.
Is there a second for that?
Second.
Councillor Hudson. Uh, all those in favour of questions?
What do you mean by local amenity?
Local amenity, the effects of visual, let's put it this way, visual effects on the local amenity.
It's quite a. And what, and what's.
Amicured air is the visual effect then.
Doesn't matter what it's made of.
He doesn't package it on.
I mean, it is unusual.
I don't know, no objection, um. So have, we've got a second, uh, councillor Hudson. Uh, all those in favour of the motions, please. Are you in favour? Two in favour, those against. And three against abstaining?
No, I meant to vote for it.
In, against, uh, for the motion, so three for the motion, three against.
Give it.
And I, I.
You have the casting rate.
Yes, I, I'm, no problems with it whatsoever. So can we say we've got no comment?
There's no objection.
No objection.
That golden development.
Need to vote on that.
Hmm?
Need to vote on that.
Oh, that we've got no?
Yeah.
No objection, we need to vote again.
Yes.
Yes, because.
You do, Chair.
The proposal failed.
The separate proposal.
Proposal is, uh, we have no objection.
The seconded.
Seconded, no.
Yeah.
Three. Councillor Nixon, those in favour of no objection?
Yeah.
Five, those against, two.
As we forget the episodes, we usually get on, but sometimes we disagree.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. God, you can have two about this, it's number four, I don't know how I understand where this is.
This is the British Heart Foundation, thirty three to thirty five Harbour Street. Change of use from retail and office store to retail with ancillary two bedroom flat. Councillor Austin called it this in, although she's not here, she was concerned about living space stroke room height in the basement rooms of the proposed flats.
So that is the shop.
Schoolwork shop.
Yeah, but what is it now?
Yeah, I was just looking, that's what I couldn't work it out.
My age, is it going to be age concern, sure?
Yeah, so what they've got here is you still, this is the, as it is existing, so you've got shop floor and all the kitchen and store rooms. And then what they're going to do is keep the existing shop front and then convert the bed, uh, the. Ground and lower ground floor into a kit, uh, bathroom and, uh, bedrooms.
Is there really to sustain the shop?
Yes, yeah, there's access through the shop, so.
There's an income to sustain it.
I'm certainly not keen on having the rooms up to ground.
Through the shop.
Is only through the shop?
There's, there's access through the shop as well as, uh.
All right.
Courtyard.
Is there access out of the courtyard thing?
Uh, there's.
Do we know?
The steps going up by the pit, but.
Oh, sorry.
That's lower ground floor, it's going down, so no.
Yeah.
Certainly going into the courtyard.
So there's no way out o- other than through the, through the shop.
There's no, onto the square behind, there isn't.
Yeah, is it?
Yeah, no, access through the shop and no, no other way out.
Well, that's overdevelopment.
Um.
Could I make a proposal?
Yes.
It's inappropriate, isn't it?
Yeah, if there's no access other than through the shop to the flat.
I think that's what you, I think that's what would be the objection, Chair.
Right, so, um, the, the motion is we object because of restricted.
If, if there's only access through the shop.
Through the shop.
There is access, um, out the side of the shop, but I can't, I'm, I'm just trying to see the, the.
There's some stairs, okay.
Where, where you've got the stairs on the left?
That's into courtyard, that's what Dean's for, so.
It's a courtyard with no access out.
That's because we can't see what's, so that's the front of the shop. I need to put my glasses back on, hang on a minute. Can't see the screen with, with them on. Right, so the front of the shop is at the top of the picture and the back door of the shop is at the bottom, is that right?
No, the front of the shop is there.
Well, that's, yeah.
That's the entrance and that's the courtyard at the back.
Right.
Enclosed.
So what's that gap of space to the left of the bottom left picture?
For another shop, it's just not written in because it's a different premises, isn't it? They're just showing the footprint of the premises.
Right.
It's another escape, the, the other premises.
Right, so that's an enclosed space.
Yes, you just said that.
So, we, uh, the proposal is that we are objecting it to it acts around some.
Yes, lack of access.
Count under Health and Safety type grant.
I don't, it's, it's not our job to do that, is it? Building roads.
What's that, Chair, sorry?
Oh, we could still.
No escape.
Concern about access safety of, of the access.
No, I think you can, you can definitely comment on that, Chair.
Okay.
Um, in relation to.
Restricted access, then.
The proposal you have is, um, we have checked if no access other than through the shop.
Or, yeah, but there is that access into an open space or.
No, yeah, but you can, no, you can't get out of there, you can't climb, you're not going to climb over the wall, are you?
If you've got a visitor, the only way they can get in is through the shop, is what we're saying. It's not that you can't get out into another space, it's a case of how do you access that building? You access it through the shop only, you're not suddenly going to transport yourself into the courtyard and access it any other way, are you? So it's through the front of the shop.
Forget the beep.
Yeah, I, I.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay, I.
Okay, can we, I will second that. Uh, shall we vote, all those in favour of that motion?
It's, uh.
Councillor Moore?
All right.
Councillor Moore, are you voting?
Okay. Everybody, right, okay.
No, I was looking at, yeah, that's the harbour, that's the harbour, yeah.
So the slipway?
Yeah, right.
Councillor Orban and Austin, so maybe you'll explain this, uh, councillor Orban.
Well, I di- I did, um, whilst I did call this in sus- subsequently, Chair, having, uh, really looked at the, at the issue. Um, which is a variation of the planning condition one on the, on the approved planning consent. And it's merely, uh, removing a reference to a, a drawing from C to D. So effectively, there isn't any change in the actual development at the end, that's what I was looking.
Is it a new building? Because I was down looking at it.
Um.
It's fairly new and I hadn't noticed that before. Or maybe I had.
It's retention of extensions, that's, that's what it is.
I do wish they'd got some containers down the side.
I make no comment, Chair.
It was meant to be two.
I wish they'd, um, paint the containers or remove the containers, they're really ugly.
Well, that's not for us to decide, Chair.
No, I know, but I might knock on the door and ask them.
So what do we?
So, the proposal is that.
Sure, so, is it making what would have been, what was a temporary building, but?
Uh.
Is that what's?
It, it's. Yeah, it was for, yeah, the planning consent's been given for the retention of extensions and alterations to the, to the existing building, so it was. It was, it was been approved, the retention of the extensions that did not have consent has been approved. And this is purely an issue about changing a, a number of a drawing.
Well, I will second that we don't have any further comment, isn't it?
Effectively.
Are there any, uh, oh, can we vote on it, please?
No objection.
No, no objection, Chair.
Objections, yeah, no objection. Still finished, did you say?
Is that, um, everybody, that's unanimous, yeah.
Abstaining, okay.
And number six, London, we're thirty three Queen Street.
So this is two story, one bed dwellings together, together with the erection of single story extension and a terrace to existing office building. It's an amended application, um, councillor Wink called this impossible overdevelopment in a conservation area. Previous comment was no comment.
Oh, previous comment, do we?
It's new, it's a new design.
You see, turned it down.
No, there's no information there.
We said no.
No, it's amended, so it's come back, it's, it's not been decided on yet.
Yeah.
So it's just changes to the building design.
One of the changes is this building here, where this is at the back of Queen Street into the, the. Top of it, and it's actually extending out, so they're actually adding, um.
Dormer window.
Dormer, is it?
Okay.
So you can see it on here at the top.
Right.
And at the back.
Yeah.
You can see they're adding dormers. I'll show you the design access.
Yeah, well, how do you get there from Queen Street, yeah?
Okay.
So the access from the back.
It must have been rather large, isn't it?
And Ca- is that Cavendish Street, Papa?
Uh, yes.
I think.
Propose no objection.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Okay, um, we've got a proposal, all those in favour of no objection?
So I will check on that, yeah.
I'm ready.
I'm going to say.
Your abstaining's been abstained, add two abstentions.
Probably not be there, but anyway.
Yeah, um, it's a bit odd.
See the death of those brown buildings just popping up and just taking up space and they're just.
And.
But the market, everybody loves it.
It's brownfield sites, isn't it?
I want people to live in something of beauty, character.
Yeah, your next application is twelve Camden Road. It's a single story extension to rear with terrace area and premises screening above. Alterations to two windows to French doors to provide access onto a terrace. Alterations to windows at ground and first floor levels to rear, enlargement of roof to provide second floor accommodation. And replacement of mono pitch roof to rear with flat roof with parapet, together with replacement of existing windows. With double glazed timber units to front elevation and aluminium frames, frame units within rear elevation. It's in the conservation area, councillor Orban called it in, effect on neighbouring properties and effect on the street scene.
Indeed.
So what they're planning on doing is this switch trunk that's out here.
Hmm.
They're actually going to fill that in. So that's the front and the back.
Yeah, it's a bouncy.
Hmm.
Used to be, I mean, before the war, it was a terrace.
Was it this?
Do you remember?
I need to play it.
When you were in the arc. That you sounded so farcistic.
Right.
Right.
Oh, for that.
Second, yeah. Yeah, I was mainly concerned about the roof, the roof extensions and the, and the effects of any, uh, if you say a piece of filling.
I've got no objection to that.
Um, then I haven't got a problem with this appealing. So I would, I would suggest no comment, Chair.
Yeah. I will, I will second that.
Thirdly. I say, Chair.
Every, every meeting we have this problem.
No, my grandson finds me every night, I won't.
I know, I know, you just need to turn your phone on.
And I tell them before the meeting.
Just turn your phone on silent, my love, that's all.
I don't know how to deal with that.
Persistence.
My grandson finds me when he goes to bed and I have told them I'm at a meeting.
That's fine, Chair, Chair. I've proposed, that, that, we've got the proposal, so whilst you're, whilst you're. Trying to sort your dog and bone out there, um. Shall we, fun, shall we have a, shall we have a vote on that, Chair, so we can conclude?
Is, what's the proposal?
Uh, no comment, Chair.
No comment, vote, I will second that, we'll all vote on that.
Being seconded, thank you.
Everybody.
Thank you, Chair.
Um, okay, that's the. I'd just like to say this civic pride thing, thank you for putting this out. I've now got certificates if anybody is willing to put those out, I know you're.
You're still on.
Southern Water, you've finished, Janet, darling, Southern Water.
Oh, right, sorry. Yeah, um. Southern Water. No, that's right.
Can I mention that?
Yeah.
So basically, we wrote to Southern Water, basically, as you've seen the answer, l- letter is you've got twenty to forty days, they haven't applied, I take it that we write them again. So basically we wrote to Southern Water, basically as you've seen the answer, le- letter is you've got twenty to forty days, they haven't replied, I take it that we write them again. South Park and then basically remind them, so if that's, if we can make it as simple as that, we are now reminding you that we are requesting that information ASAP, so.
Indeed.
The town clerk and I will take responsibility for that and, and that.
Fantastic.
Okay?
Fantastic, best of good respect.
If we still don't have access to benches.
Yeah.
Yes, indeed.
Well, we want compensation, it's not bad.
Yes, we do.
Well, we want the information that we've asked for first and then we can further it, but at the moment, they said they're going to get back to us at the end of the day and they haven't, so if you will leave it with us, we will, we will chase that up.
I'll second that, is I'm really happy with that, the vote.
We're all happy, Chair, I think.
All happy.
Brilliant, thank you very much.
Sorry that I missed that. And the date and time next meeting?
Yep, tenth of November, seven P M.
Yeah.
Tenth of November, November, darling. Yes. Seven P M.
You good? And I thank you all for coming.
Thank you very much, Chair.